Seven eleven, we'll call the meeting to order. First part on the agenda is comments from the floor. Okay, next thing is a presentation on community service programs. By Dr. Nick, oh no, Dr. Professor Latino.
You're Latino.
There you go. Sorry.
Thank you.
My bad.
Hi, everyone. You all enjoy dinner? I enjoyed watching you eat. So just always, as always, start with our mission, vision, and values. This is important because it's the focus of everything we do. And we talk about every learner together, world ready. We talk about, you know, whole child, talk about community. That's what we're doing tonight. There we go. So we're going to be talking about a community service program. And so there's basically three different things we're going to be talking about. The first, we have a requirement, required fifteen hours. We'll talk about the details of each one for participation in government economics. The second one, which is, I'm extremely excited about, I'm really excited about everything, is a comprehensive diploma, which is going to really introduce a lot of opportunities to our students and to our community. And then finally, just a little bit about the software we're using to track it all. So first, the planning phases. Dr. Nick and I met with the class office from grades nine to eleven. We wanted to get student input, see what they thought of it. It was, so for me, the biggest takeaway, well, two. Number one, the ninth graders in particular were super excited about this opportunity, especially the graduate diploma with distinction, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So I was really excited to see how happy they were and how, you know, that they see this as a great opportunity, they see it as an opportunity to get involved, they were very excited about it. And all of the kids all said the same thing, that A, this is a good idea, and it's something that everyone could do. Many of them are already doing it, but it's really something that, it's not going to be too off-putting for anyone. Dr. Nick contacted Fonda Fultonville, so, you know, that's where, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, just inquiring all the details of the program, and then we wanted to look at different programs around the area. In Gloversville, I think Johnstown's looking to put the same plan in place. They've had it for years there. Also, our guidance, Amanda, reached out to their guidance department as well to get additional details, to make sure we had everything correct. So we'll do more detail about it later.
Okay. And so, this is kind of, we, so we met with the department chairs, guidance, myself. So this is, we wanted a group of people to get involved in it. And so we created a preliminary list of organizations. But one of the great things about the community service program is students will know of things that we don't know about. And so this, we have a preliminary list of organization, but because of the software we're using, it's very easy for students to be able to add things, you know, add organizations as, you know, as they come up in real time. You know, down the road, which we haven't done yet, we have to meet with the organizations to explain the programs, to get their buy-in. It's all very easy, and I think that everyone would like the opportunity to have that extra help. So I, I think those meetings will go very well. So the first part will be for the PIG credits. This is going to be mandatory, so every senior is going to have to do this. So it's fifteen hours of community service during the school year. And, you know, that could be done a variety of different ways, and it's very flexible, so it'll meet the needs of really any student.
Nick, just a question.
Yeah.
I note this is a community service requirement, has been in PIG for a while. Is this different than that current one? And if so, in what way?
Well, so from, it's my understanding as of right this moment, there is not a community service requirement. So we're, I think there was one in the past, and then we're implementing it back in.
Oh, okay. So there was, I know there was one, that's why I asked.
Yeah. And so, and it's, and it really is an important thing that somehow got lost, and I think it's something that we need to have. And in addition to the fifteen hours, the tenth piece one meeting, our meeting, village meeting, town meeting, court, you know, so a lot of different options there. And then, and I think this is really another exciting part, is these assignments will be talked about in class. So assignments will be developed to further flesh out the community service, and also give our kids a chance to share. Because I think our kids are going to have such a wide variety of experiences, it's going to be nice having them have the opportunity to sit with their peers and kind of talk about, this is what I'm doing, this is how I'm giving back, and get one another excited about what they're doing in the community. So the teacher, and we'll talk about this a little more later, but we have software connected through Navvions, very easy to use for all parties involved. So the teacher will be able to track it, I'll be able to look at it, students will be able to easily log their own hours, as well as the community providers.
What are you using to validate what they do?
So basically, if, so let's just say that someone's going to volunteer in animal shelter. So we'll reach out to the animal shelter and give them access to this program. So when you have, say, three kids, you know, Tyler and Pete both go, and they volunteer at the animal shelter. At the end of it, whoever is in charge there will just click, you know, Tyler, this many hours, this many hours, and it just gets followed through the software. So very easy to use on both ends of it.
Each community organization has to have a supervisor, and they have to go through that supervision.
Do they have to download the software onto some machine on their end, or is it online? It's through the internet?
Yeah. So it's just a login, and then it's all connected through there. And, you know, and so there's a lot of benefits to this. Number one, it gets kids out, involved in the community. You know, if you, if you do the math on it, all kids do fifteen hours, we're giving back a thousand hours plus to the community, not counting the extra hours we'll do with the distinction. Let's kids see meetings, you know, there's a process to everything. You know, everyone talks about laws, how things are made, and so kids, it's easy to talk about things, but it's nice to see the process. So by mandating the meetings, we're giving these kids this experience, and we're giving them the ability to make connections and networking, which is really a lost art, you know, so much stuff online. It's nice to be able to go and, you know, meet with local people, form bonds, which could lead to, you know, further opportunities down the line. And I already mentioned that. Yeah.
Why are you calling it participation in government and economics if it's, what is it, open for whatever they do?
That's the class.
Yeah. There's already an existing class, which is required for graduating.
So this is through the class?
Yes.
Requirement for taking the class to graduate, is the fifteen hours through participation in government economics?
Yeah. Right now, the kid, the participation in government is half-year course, and then economics the other half-year course, so they rotate. All seniors are required to take that to graduate. And so that seemed to be the best place to put the community service, because it directly deals with the curriculum of that class.
I thought that's what you were calling the university.
I know. I can see that. But it's the, is the community service for that class. So in addition to that, we're also doing a comprehensive diploma. So this includes three hundred hours of community service, but this is a four-year program. So this is all voluntary, it's not something kids have to do. The ninth graders that we spoke about it were all really excited. Every ninth grader table said, this is something I would like to do. And so three hundred hours may seem like a lot, but honestly, many of these kids are doing so much already, and they'll be able to also do it over the summer, which I think will be really important to helping kids meet these hours. So on top of the three hours of, three hundred hours of community service, four years of math, four years of science, and then three years of some kind of sequence, art, business, music, tech, language, and again, many of our kids will already be doing these things. And then finally, there'll be a final project, the end, which kind of wraps it all up. So this, I think, is really good, because we always want to be...
What counts for a music sequence?
Well, there's, you know, you have a variety of things. We have, you know, through the music tech programs, bands, choirs, orchestra, so, you know, whatever sequence they're in for the high school career, a three-year music program. And many of our kids who take music would probably likely be into four, and I think many of the kids, in my opinion, who do this, will have more. You know, many kids will have three years or four years of music, as well as three or four years of language. So they'll probably meet these on multiple levels, but this is just the minimum requirement.
But those music, those existing music classes are a totally different credit basis than the others?
I think we're, I think the confusion is the comprehensive diploma. Can you explain what that means? Because that's not an actual, it's not the graduation regents diploma.
No, I know.
Right, well, so it's, it's a distinction on their diploma. So it's basically, they do the three hundred hours of community service in addition to four years of math, four years of science, and then three years of one of those, and again, many kids will be doing more. And then a final part. So it's still a regents diploma, it may or may not be an advanced regents diploma, so, you know, it doesn't have to be if a kid doesn't have the grade to get an advanced regents, it'll just be a regular regents diploma. But it will have that distinction. And so that distinction is something that sets them apart. At the end of the day, we want our kids to be ready for college, we want our kids to, you know, we want them to stand out in the sea of applications that colleges get. And so colleges will look at it, and they see all these community service hours, they wind up with an additional three credits, so they have twenty-eight credits for graduation. You know, and it just, it just makes them stick out. When you have two people with the same degree, and this kid did, oh, well, this kid also did all these extra things. They did this extra final project, they gave three hundred or more hours back to the community. That's something that gives them an edge, and I think it's something that makes our kids more marketable. So, and then just, you know, on a side note, kids who are doing the three hundred hours, they don't have to do three hundred fifteen, the fifteen hours gets marketed into them. And like I said, we already mentioned this, but it's just a special distinction on the diploma, and I think it's something that helps kids stand out, and it's something that'll make them more marketable to colleges.
What is that special distinction? Is there a stamp on their diploma? And is this comprehensive diploma title something that is a standardly recognized title across the country, across the state?
It's a special distinction when we put in their transcript. So when they fill out applications, they can put down that they have the three extra credits due to a comprehensive diploma, which consists of three hundred hours of community service.
Do they have to put all that, or is that something?
Not all, but we'll put it down as what's called a comprehensive diploma.
And then it shows...
So create a field?
Will their diploma look different?
Their diploma, their distinction on the graduation requirements will, and their transcript will.
But not the actual diploma?
I don't think so, but I'll have to check, but I don't think so.
I mean, it would be kind of cool if there was a special seal we could put on or something like that.
Good idea.
Yeah, I like that.
I still have a concern over the music. If somebody takes three years of art, that's a lot different credit load, for example, for three years of tech than three years of choir.
How so?
Because choir is only a fraction of the credit.
Well, they would, they would need three total years, okay, so I understand your question.
And only a fraction of the number of four classes.
Right. And so they would have to, I mean, I would imagine, and I think we're still working on the details, but I would imagine they would have to augment that, to have a total of three credits. Because, right, so choir is something that meets every other day, so it winds up being a half-credit for the year. So in three years, you're one and a half credits, in four years, you're two credit, sorry, two credits. And so you would have to augment that with any number of other music classes that we have.
Exactly. You could still do music, but I would just want to make sure it's equally, you know what you're reading?
Right.
It should read three units instead of three years.
Right, so maybe the wording on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Units up here, yeah.
Right. And so the people, so they could easily fulfill that, but not just by taking choir, they would need comprehensive.
Correct. That's what I was trying to get at.
Okay, yeah.
And when Fonda, we're looking at Fonda's, and theirs was just language. Like, geez, you know, our kids have branched out in different avenues, why just language? So if a kid wants to take up business, he wants to...
No, I agree with that.
Wants to take them, so, yeah, I think we change that, and we put it out there to three units.
Yeah, three units, or three credits.
Three credits.
Okay. So this is the name of the system that goes through Navvions, it's a connection with Navvions. And so basically, you know, we'll develop a database of organizations, we'll have an onsite supervisor who we'll meet with, who will be able to monitor this. The system, like I said, it's very simple, and it's also very easy to add things, because I think one thing we anticipate is students will be adding things as they go, and students will be presenting us with new opportunities, which is also exciting, because we already have a pretty nice list, but it's nice that that will always be growing, you know, to meet the needs of our, our students.
What if they go outside of our list?
So if they go outside of our list, all they have to do is come to us and say, this is what I'm doing, and then...
And out there.
Yeah, we could approve it, we add it to our list at that point, and then we reach out to that organization, and we explain to them, help get them set up with the procedure, so they're all ready to log on. And then, like I said, it's as easy as creating a login and going from there, so it should be, should be simple, so, you know...
And if, if an organization wanted to participate in this program, who would they, how would they go about that?
So I think they could probably contact any, so if an organization wanted to, like, if they heard about the program, not from a student, they could call any number of people. They can call myself, they could call Ms. Rose, Mr. Smith, they can call Dr. Fitzgerald, and, you know, any, any number of people, any number of contacts in the school could eat, will have access to add them onto the list. So as word of mouth, and that's a great question, because as a word of mouth spreads, people may say, hey, you know, I'd like in on this. And then, so it's just a matter of contacting the school, you know, adding them on, it's very simple. And so, you know, the hours are locked, and it's easy to track for providers, for school, for students, and that's just a link.
Yeah, we'll show it.
Yeah, okay.
Just a quick video out there.
Tracking service hours should be as digital as your students. If the strategic initiatives for your district include promoting involvement in the community, volunteering, community service, or service learning, then our award-winning product, X2Val, can help you centralize service by allowing school administrators to create service goals, post opportunities, and approve hours. X2Val is being used by public and private schools nationwide to replace the paper tracking process. Here's how it works. X2Val can be customized to a wide range of service program structures. You can set up multi-year service goals, annual service goals, and even set up requirements for different types of service. One of our experienced service program specialists will work with you to set it up. Once rolled out, school staff members will be able to post opportunities that are school-sponsored, or post on behalf of nonprofit organizations. Schools also have the option to invite nonprofit organizations to post directly to the students. Students receive a reminder prior to the event, and after they've completed their service, they will log their hours and include the date, the number of hours, contact information, and their reflections. Verification, approval, and authentication is part of X2Val's process. Service history and service transcripts are always available online to the student, the school, and the parents for use on the college application, scholarships, and resumes. Your students are making a positive difference in the community. It's easy to get started. We look forward to working with you.
So someone like Blake Smith, who we've already spoken with a couple times, the guidance, he would run, you know, weekly reports, like, doing how many hours they have, how it would be going, and the students can run the reports too. And then guidance can follow the three hundred hours as well. National Honor Society would be great for them as well, as they're logging their hours and so on. And it ties to the Navvions program, so it downloads it in, so it have a profile there, includes all the community service stuff they do.
So, you know, just to wrap, to rack up, two programs, give students an opportunity, gain the experience, give back to the community, so everyone will be required to do something which is important, and some kids will get to do a lot, a lot of extra. We've mentioned this before, the importance of teaching students how to network, develop relations with community organizations, develop relations with businesses, you know, getting to know people, getting to get in the world, is just an important skill that I think is very much so lost nowadays. And this gives our students an opportunity to do that. You know, give them the basic knowledge of how public organizations function, which is valuable. I know when I was in school, I never went to any meetings, I had no idea what went on, and I think that, you know, you really learn a lot from seeing the process of how things go. And this is, you know, the community district will gain over a thousand service hours a year, and that's just from the fifteen hours apiece. When you start factoring, and I see this as, you know, just in my opinion, it's going to have a snowball effect. The freshmen, the sophomores kind of start, they get excited, so they're doing the extra hours, and then, you know, you picture three, four years down the line, we're going to have the fifteen hours a year, plus students nine through twelve giving the community service hours. So you're literally talking about thousands of hours at that point, and I just think that's very exciting. And, you know, and it removes some of the stigma for our students. Nowadays, you hear a lot about how these kids today are so lazy, all they care about is their phones and how self-centered they are, you know, it's just not true. People who work in schools know that's not true, that's just kind of a perception of this generation, and when they're out there in the community, it's very easy to shake that perception and show really how civic-minded and how hardworking our kids today are, especially in this community. And, you know, and it's easy, and I think that's important. We don't have to get bogged down with paperwork, all through logins, everything's tracked digitally, and it could be, you know, seen by so many people, so nice and simple. Any other questions?
Well, I was wondering, will there be any kind of evaluation, kind of at the end of a period of service for the organization? Where it would be both to evaluate the students and, you know, and help the student to grow more from it?
Yeah.
And also, you know, to see how, how the organization is functioning in terms of helping the students to get that experience.
So in the, in the PIG class, there'll be assignments, reflections, discussions, so they'll be evaluating everything on the student front. What I think, and what you just brought up, which we haven't discussed, which might be a nice idea, is to figure out a way to get, you know, provider feedback as well, to, you know, give it that extra edge. So that, that's definitely something I think could be added to it.
Is actually, you're in the evaluation form in X2EOL that the organizations will pull out, give us any feedback, details, suggestions?
Minimally, I would suggest you do that. Maximally, if somebody gives over a certain number of hours to an organization, maybe you want to have a personal feedback on that person's service to that organization over if they did a significant number of hours to that organization.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and I also think it might be nice if a kid does give X amount of hours, if we could reach out to those organizations and maybe ask for a letter of recommendation, a reference letter, and I think that would even further bolster our kids' transcripts.
Anyway, what this does is it forges communication. So as, you know, they have communication directly to the teacher, the guidance, the principal, and we have the recommunication person, five or seven, you can say, hey, how are we doing? I'm noticing that seven kids are logging, you know, eighty hours, you know, the last six months, and only one, so I think it adds to the, the lack of communication we probably have as a whole for our community organizations, it'll add a little piece to that, too. I think it's a bad idea to have annual meeting.
No, I think it's a great idea.
What's going to be overseeing?
So the PIG teacher would be over, which would be Mr. Smith for now, will be overseeing it.
The fifteen-hour piece.
Right.
They'd be overseeing that. Guidance will be tracking the three hundred hours.
Oh, thank you.
Is it okay?
Go ahead.
No, just a couple of things I wanted to add is just, I taught, this year I taught PIG in my law class, and my law class counted for the third year, or for the PIG requirement, so I actually have some juniors, I just wanted to throw this out there, I have some juniors who took my PIG class this year, or my law class, which counts for their PIG, so I'm just writing a note that we'll want to, so they'll have to do this requirement next year. They'll have to do this community service, hopefully next year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Starting next year.
Okay, to throw that in there.
And then also, I would stretch it to say that next year, if you, if we do the same thing we did, and you teach your law class to the eleventh graders, we'll get them to do it, so it runs concurrently with the class, I think it makes more sense that way. This one little group of kids will just have to, you know, show one of them.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that we, and I just wanted to let you know that I do have my, through my, through SUNY, out of my secondary business education, I got my cooperative work-study certification, so I do have that certification as well, co-op coordination, work-study, so I've been training that. I've never used it.
No time like the present.
So if this is wildly successful, which it will be, we're a small community, you're going to have hundreds of students working hundreds of hours a year. That's a lot of organizations probably that they're touching. So we ought to make sure that we think as we design this, so that there's less burden on us, and it's an open system in how we define the community, because it's probably going to be far beyond Kenjo.
Yeah, definitely. And I think that's one of the, of the really strengths of the software, is that it is, it's pretty user-friendly in adding, adding in new events, and it's, you know, it's so easy for the providers to input, for the students to input, so it's not just like one person has to keep track of everything, it's a whole network of people. So I think as it grows and everyone, you know, everyone's used to looking at it, I think, I think it will be pretty self-regulating, and I think if the ultimate goal of that is what happens, where we have hundreds of hours, thousands of hours being put back...
You would, it is.
Yeah, which is an amazing thing. I, I'm pretty optimistic about it personally.
I, I think, I think that's there, you know, like, personal meetings with each one of those, that isn't, you can't build that into that kind of program probably, right? I mean, there's things that we need to think about. If we really want everybody to do three hundred hours, that's going to be a lot of...
Well, not everybody will do three hundred hours. But the ones that, but I agree with what you're saying, is the ones that are doing three hundred hours, so those ones doing fifteen hours, it's simple, because that's all done within their class.
Yes, yeah.
And the ones that do three hundred hours, and, and that's something that guidance and I will work together to make sure that we are meeting those meetings, you know, we're meeting with them, and doing some of the stuff that will be done in PIG, the reflection and stuff, with them as they go. Because, you know, you don't, you want to be able to, especially ninth graders, tenth graders, help guide them through that, you know? So I think that's a really important piece to it.
Are you, are the different school-based community events also going to be included in those volunteer hours?
Yes.
Such as...
Haunted House, the movie night, so all those things?
Right.
Yeah, so that, that's a, that's an easy opportunity for some kids to get hours. You know, so you come here, you help, you know, you sell concession stands at the haunted house, or, you know, whatever it is, because that's, that is giving back to our community, that's a big piece of it.
Right. Okay. You know, especially for those kids who might not be able to go out into...
Exactly. And now, honestly, I think, you know, based on the number of things we've already done this year, and the number of things we're continuing to do, I think it'd be pretty easy for a senior to come to, you know, a few nights at Kenjo, and, you know, give back here, and easily meet their fifteen hours.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I think what Fonda really saw is starting to pick up because of legacy, like, you know, his family's going through, and kids have done it, husbands, family, you know, it's caught on, it's become kind of a common thing, kids are excited about, you know, doing it, so.
Good.
Be nice to send out an email or, or a newsletter at the end to you to say that we logged two thousand eight hundred and fifty hours of community service for our, you know, our students. Be pretty powerful.
Okay, great, thank you. You're welcome. Okay, next student report, take your way, Tyler.
So all county is going to be held on the twenty-ninth at Kennedy Harriet High School, and the first rehearsal was on Tuesday on the twenty-fifth. During this time, we had several students from, like, from all the, all the schools within the county, and we practiced. Our dodgeball tournament is going to be on the seventh as a fundraiser for the junior class, and people of all ages are invited. Our first community dance was held on the fifteenth of February. We had seventy adults that attended from our community, and all of them were there, had a good time, and they enjoyed the eighties music played by Madhouse. Dinner movie night is going to be held on the twentieth, and there's all-you-can-eat spaghetti, and here's actually a flyer made by Natalie Frank, giving all of the information. And there's going to be, there's going to be a show of Jumanji, and the pre-sale details is, is going to be...
And I'd suggest that you do some family practice.
Yes.
Just a suggestion. We'll talk about that tomorrow.
What, I'm sorry, is, what is that benefiting?
Star.
Star.
Stars.
Yeah, star and the Pringles can. So primarily star and the Pringles can, just a little bit, just because we're helping, but it's really more for star, so we could have money in the account, and so we could do all our star days, first day of school, before breaks, because it's something that has always been wildly successful, and something we want to keep doing and grow.
No, it's good.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tyler. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is NISB budget analysis. We all received this, I'm just going to give a quick overview, a little bit of background, and then, okay, this is all based on the governor's proposed budget. Obviously, the, there's a negotiating that always goes on, and the governor's budget is usually lowballing the amounts and the proposals, and the legislature usually comes in with what I would consider closer to a, a more... And the legislature usually comes in with what I would consider closer to a, a more equitable and fair, um, proposal. I just wanna give a little bit of background, just so we're all on the same page, about the, um, the state aid, foundation aid formula. I just wanted to say where it came from. In nineteen ninety-five, a lawsuit was initiated which challenged the current New York State funding, um, formulas as being inequitable and unconstitutional, because it discriminated against students from poorer districts. So not all students were getting an equitable, um, education. And that lawsuit lasted twelve years and was finally settled in two thousand and seven. Where the state finally agreed to implement a foundation aid formula that would begin to remedy, um, this, this inequality in funding for students. That was two thousand and seven, and, uh, they, where they agreed, and it was gonna start in two thousand and eight. But we all know what happened in two thousand and eight, the economy collapsed. So instead of a, a foundation aid for, uh, aid formula that would benefit students, they in fact started something that was a takeback of the funds that they gave in order to balance the budget. And I used to know the name of it, and somebody could probably.
Cap elimination?
What? Cap elimination adjustment, you all remember that? So what would happen is that they would, they would make a, uh, an aid projection and then take it back to balance the budget, which is a great way to do it, take it away from students, right? So anyhow, um, so they never have fully refunded the foundation aid formula as they agreed to do, even once the recession was over. And the calculation currently is that we are four billion dollars behind where we should be in terms of foundation aid, according to the agreement that was agreed in two thousand and seven. So that, I just wanted to give that as kind of a background, so that we're, you know, we all know where we are and where we came from. So with the executive budget, um, as, as it indicates in here, it's for eight hundred and twenty-six million dollars is what Cuomo was proposing, which could be a two-point-one percent increase. But of that, only five hundred and fourth million dollars goes to foundation aid. With, that gives schools the ability to decide how to best use their resources for their educational purposes. Fifty million of that will go to a community school set aside, which will bring the community school set aside to about three hundred million dollars. What the community school set aside is, is money that's specifically targeted, that tells districts, if you want this money, this is what you have to do. And what it is, is setting up community schools. What are community schools? There's schools that provide, um, health clinics, that provide counseling, that provide remedial services, that provide mental health help. And it's, you know, things that, it, it dictates kind of what schools can do with this money. It does not give them the discretion to do what they feel is most appropriate and necessary for their particular districts. And that's one of the reasons why NISBA is not happy with that, because they feel the school districts are best equipped to know how best to use their resources. And they feel that that money should all be part of the foundation aid formula, so that then we can make those decisions, rather than having them dictated to us. Um, both the, uh, NISBA and the, uh, New York State Board of Regents, um, wanted a, a, uh, request, said what was necessary was about two-point-one billion dollars to adequately fund schools this year. So there's a big difference between what Cuomo was suggesting and what the Board of Regents and NISBA feels is necessary. The other thing that they have is, uh, two hundred million dollars added to this eight hundred and twenty-six million dollars is for quote targeted high-needs school district aid, uh, which sounds like a good idea, but they give no details about how that's gonna be determined and who will get it and why and how. So that is still very much up in the air, so, you know, uh, NISBA is not happy with it, and I don't think I am either. Okay, so that's that, um, let's see, what else? They are going, he's proposing to consolidate ten separate aid categories into a base amount. So I, I kind of, uh, you know, when, when they, when they, when they say something like that, I think block grants. You know, and, and what it, what the problem is with that is it's very unpredictable, because now you don't have specific reasons for aid. They just say, here, you get this lump sum and you, you figure out how to use it for all ten different areas it discovers. So that, you know, there's a, there's just, you know, a lot of apprehension about that. Um, in terms of building aid, um, they wanna, he's proposing to reduce support for capital projects, um, which again, you know, definitely damages for this pro, ongoing project, but certainly could, you know, damage us going forward in the future. On transportation aid, it's, it's very daunting, they, there's two things that they would, uh, start to consider. This could be starting in twenty-one, twenty-two. One is that the amount that you would get increases in transportation aid would be tied to the inflation rate, not to what your actual transportation costs were. So if gasoline went up fifty percent or something like that, um, but inflation rate was two percent, well, you're stuck at two percent, sorry. And as well, they would also tie it more directly to the student enrollment in districts. So again, it would, you know, even if you have a drop in student enrollment, it doesn't mean you have a drop in the number of buses that are required to get the students here. So it, it, again, could create potentially a very difficult situation of transportation losses. Uh, for charter schools, um, there's an increase of five-point-three percent versus two-point-one percent that, uh, where, that school, the foundation aid is going up. Um, and one of the things that's really weird is that they are gonna reissue charters that had been suspended, revoked, or terminated. Um, and, you know, this is a whole questionable thing to begin with about why are they doing that? But the other thing is that these schools, charter schools that get rechartered will not count toward the cap of the number of charter schools. That would be commended in the New York State. Cause there is a limit, and it's under state law of the number of charter schools. But these rechartered charter schools will not be part of that, they'll be part of the old, the old school. So again, it's, uh, you know, Cuomo's always been a champion of charter schools, um, and, you know, this is just another way to try to game the system. And also funding for non-public schools, he's proposing a three percent increase, um, and again, you know, NISBA, I agree, you know, you know, school, public schools are gonna be funded, they should. Then the final blow is the CSE funding, um, they want to eliminate, he proposes to eliminate the state share of costs, which is now eighteen percent. So the school district share of CSE costs will go up from thirty-eight percent to fifty-six percent of the cost of CSE. Again, it's gonna, it would hit, it would be a hit on our budget, and on our ability to do what we need to do for our students. So altogether, it's not a pretty picture, and, um, this is all gonna be negotiated with our, uh, with the state legislature. And I think that it would be important for us going forward, and I think we should maybe have more of a discussion at the March meeting of things that we might do, um, the first March meeting, things we might do to kind of put some, uh, you know, pressure on our state legislators to do the right thing. So any questions or comments?
We're going down to Superintendents next week, there's a conference in the lobby next Monday, two twenty-two.
Okay, so seeing that, you, you.
One other question, is student mental health services, seems like a really small number, is that by district, or is that for the whole state? One point five million to support mental health programs to schools across the whole state? Some people read that and say, wow, one point five million.
Right, considering the fact that they're trying to not put that as part of our curriculum now, it doesn't make any sense. Here, do it.
Unadmitted.
That's right.
Here, do it.
But that, that is clear from this, I mean, there's a lot of issues that we really want to see addressed and, and remedied. Um, because if all this stuff would go through, it would be a disaster scenario for us. And not only for us, but for all, especially the low-income school districts around the state. And of course, they're, they are not reducing the, um, their, their, uh, funding for schools that they, what do they call it, tax? Tax, it's like to, we, if you pay high taxes, cause you have high property values, they give you funding to make it less painful.
Yeah, I don't get it.
And I forget the term.
It's just the high tax aid.
Oh, hi, hi, high tax, it's high tax.
We don't get that.
Funding.
Yeah, we should.
But we, we don't get that. But Fort Plain School District does, which is, is, I can't comprehend, but anyhow. So moving on to the next thing then, if there are no other questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Mark.
Okay, so we'll go to approvals, can we do a?
Motion for consent agenda on approvals?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, so Scotiabank Bill, Central School District Health and Law Fair Contract. Explanation?
So student that is, um, parent, parent currently placed in a private school within the Scotiabank Bill district, and because they're placed there, it is, um, the Scotia is charged for their, um, medical stuff, and nurses on. And because it's actually our, the students are ours, we get back, because it's a private school.
Yes, I recall it was a couple thousand dollars for their physical exam. It's ridiculous.
Well, that is ridiculous as the four thousand dollars someone had to pay to get a coronavirus test recently. Okay, that's, that's a lot of money. Okay.
This happens annually.
Whatever.
Okay, LPL, any other questions on that one? Okay, LPL Financial Trustee.
Yes, this is the investment fund for our scholarship fund. We just need a resolution to me, Dr. Fitzgerald's trustee rather than this stuff.
Is this under FAM, are they connected?
No, LPL is a division of MBT Investment Services. Um, the FAM account, that's for the, uh, the trade scholarship. That's where those funds are.
But I thought all of those scholarships were in the FAM at this point?
Nope.
Yeah, no?
No, it never has been.
No, okay. Never has to move?
No, no, we've always had the LPL.
So there's two different scholarship funds, is what you're saying?
Well, the LPL is like that conglomeration of, um, kind of the smaller community scholarships, if families were, you know, in area. The, uh, the FAM, the Jasper and Isabella, that's, uh, like, a large, one of the big four scholarships.
Okay.
That's for the, uh, Bell Droid.
Any other questions on that?
I just didn't realize it was two different funds.
Okay, and then FAM trustee? Same thing? Okay. All right, so, um, are there other questions, all in favor of the approvals?
Aye.
All's? Then we have personnel, substitute monitor.
She is existing, uh, substitute bus driver. She's interested in, if her semester hours are possible, so she'll be rolling herself as a monitor. On the bus.
Since she's recommended, I assume.
She is by Mr. Brown.
So she's gonna be substitute monitor and a substitute driver?
Yes.
The second one is we've been gathering a few baseball. Are they, are they the same? Are those two positions the same, um, grade?
Yeah, but she's a.
So how are you handling that?
She's serving substitute, uh, bus driver, so it's a separate issue, substitute monitor.
That's two, and they're on two different bases?
Yes, yeah, substitute drivers make a difference.
Okay, so, um, next one is JV basket, baseball coach?
Do you wanna just motions?
Oh, you want to? We can set on this one as well?
Or just.
Okay, well, have a motion to approve the monitor.
Motion.
So, okay, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, okay, JV baseball coach?
Who was our JV baseball coach before? I don't have, we just, this.
JV? He was.
Curry was varsity, Curry was.
Joe, when he moved up to varsity, is that what's happening? He ran as football coach for us. Is that what happened, Joe was JV and he moved to varsity?
They leveled here.
Joe Brown, right, Joe Brown. Yeah, I thought Joe Brown was JV.
Joe Brown was JV.
Is he now varsity?
Yes. Yeah.
I could not find a JV baseball coach, we can, we can field it because of the number of, same approach. What's your cutoff, meaning to decide if you field a team of, of kids? Number of kids? Yeah. I was saying it's the one that I'm just saying.
Are you having trouble getting kids to sign up for baseball?
I think the numbers are softball and baseball, uh, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five. So I'm gonna, I hope you get a couple more out, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Which will lead into our, our presentation next.
Any other questions on?
What is his, um?
Experience?
Experience.
Coaching baseball-wise? Not too much baseball, he was the football coach too, but when you have option A or option B, that'll be option A.
So, so he coached here before?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's, that's what I'm asking, okay.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure he did a bunch with, um, with the, with you.
I'm a volleyball player. You're gonna do it.
Any, any other questions, comments? Okay, um, um.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All's? Okay, um, do we need an executive session?
Can I ask something on the business?
Yes, you can.
I just wanted to know how the esports are still. Have to, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, um, one platform, League of Legends, um, is actively working without a problem. One of the, or two of the other games run on a platform called Steam. The problem that. Steam. Um, the problem they're having with Steam is not just with us, it's across all of upstate New York that's doing this right now. For Steam to work, you have to open up person-to-person sharing, so think of Napster, and it creates a very big security problem for the district. Um, ultimately, the final solution that NAREC's looking at with other districts in the, uh, in the NAREC region is we're probably to open those games up, we're gonna have to dedicate machines that are basically turned on for that purpose, monitored, and then shut off, because they essentially have to lose, they have to bypass almost all filtering, because they have, um, what's called dynamic IP addresses. The IPs are always constantly changing, it's not a static single address. So there's, there's a slew of problems, but the League of Legends platform, which is the biggest platform, which we have the most interest in, is already off and on.
And our, and we have kids.
Yeah, we have kids on active teams playing and. Yes.
So is that dedicated machine something that we would want to do? It still sounds like an awful dangerous IT solution.
Well, what they can do is.
Cause you're still wired to something out there in the cloud.
Yes, um, what they were doing with the proposal, at least initially, has been, if you have those dedicated machines, they can lock them down to literally, they're open under supervision, where those machines only work through the network from three o'clock to four-thirty during practice time. So they can, as secure as they can get them, they can, they can, they can make that through the network filter. Um, unless Steam starts moving towards a direction where they understand schools are gonna have this problem. Um, in talking to Playversus, our net, who is the organization that, that runs all of this, it is a very, it's specifically right now a problem in a couple states, one of them, the. um, it is a very, it's specifically right now a problem in a couple states, one of them, New York, because we have some of the most stringent privacy and student protection laws. Um, you go to other states and they're up and running and playing because they don't monitor student access or strict filtering agents like we do.
That'll change over time.
Absolutely, that law treaty is gonna change quite quickly in other places. Um, it's something that everyone's experiencing, so I'm confident they will build a workaround. Um, but right now, the, the initial title is, uh, is off and running.
Thanks, I was just wondering.
No problem. And they, and they are adding more titles to the available catalog, so there are other things coming down the pipe that are not Steam-based. So even if those two titles on Steam are never fully enabled, we'll still have other options for kids of them.
Are we looking at giving a dedicated machine option for those other two?
It's something that, we wouldn't until there's a final solution from NAREC that is, is coming down the pipe, that this is what you should do one way or the other. Um, I would hate to dedicate seven machines or ten machines.
Yeah.
That are out of general student circulation.
Right.
The one thing, uh, our NAREC reps are also trying to figure out is if they can set any machine up to bypass those filters just during a certain window. So machines one through seven from three o'clock to five-thirty bypass that filter when it's under, um, supervision of the esports coordinator.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I don't want y'all to get used to this, but I want to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.